No, it isn't. We don't get it until the end of the month.
No.
We get three this month. We are always the last.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So it'll be.
For the liquor store, do I put in the liquor store number or the city of Enzo number?
For the code for where you're paying it?
Yeah, for the water and.
The code, you're gonna put in your code, your my code. For the vendor you're up in Paynesville Liquor.
All right. It's six o'clock.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with our council activity reports. I attended the the Huba Train Parade. There were a lot of people there. But more importantly, I think we had an ad hoc library committee meeting before today where we made some recommendations regarding the Washburn Court Building and also discussed a visit that was made by a number of us to Fargo on Friday of the library board. So as we recall, we discussed that a number of NDSU students were asked to draw up some sort of preliminary thoughts and sketches and plans for a new library. The benefit there being that we would get 60 minds working on different ideas for the library as part of their semester-long project. So they finished those and a group of five of us, five or six, went up there and looked at everything that they had come up with. I was able to see the presentations for 15 of them. There were about 15 in each class. There are four different classrooms total. So 15 of them, a lot of them had really great ideas where if money were no object, we could implement them in a second. But all of them, I think, had things that we could really take and try and incorporate into buildings here. There were even a couple of them from the room that we were in where I was with Lauren Emerson, who's an actual architect. And she and I both looked at each other with one or two of them and said, we could basically plunk that building down in Paynesville and that would be a realistic proposal. But there were a lot of other things in there that I hadn't thought of that we could incorporate. So I think it was a really great exercise. I'm really grateful for the students for having put that together and doing all of the work on that. I think of the 16 or 15 that I saw, I was really impressed by all but maybe one of them. One, I got the impression, because, you know, they're college kids undergrads, that they were kind of maybe phoning it in a little bit. But otherwise, everybody else was really into the project, really engaged, and really came up with some fantastic ideas. So I think that was a great way for us to look at new things that we can incorporate, new ways of looking at things from an outside perspective. They also looked at a number of different sites, including the fire hall site, the old GNT Foods, and the empty lot by Highway 55 by the Catholic Church. I think of the four sites, everybody who went up to Fargo to look at these was unanimous that the empty lot behind the Washburn Court Building is the most versatile in terms of making a new library work, incorporating designs, and allowing room for expansion in the future. The recommendation coming out of the library board that we had just before tonight's meeting was a unanimous recommendation that the council buy that land. And we'll talk about that later in tonight's meeting. But otherwise, I think it was a great time. Again, the students were very receptive and grateful for the opportunity. A number of them did come here and look at the site. There was one kid who grew up in Paynesville. Unfortunately, we don't know his full name. We just know he's Brandon, who now goes to NDSU. But there's another kid from New London who had a really great idea for the GNT Building. Overall, just really wonderful projects, and I'm really grateful we had the opportunity to do it. And as a council, I extended our thanks to them for all the work that they did. Otherwise, for a report, that's all I have. Turn it over. Megan, you're on the end today, so.
No time. I think that it's been kind of a slow couple of weeks for me. I think that all that I had was the meeting at Washburn Court.
Oh, yes, there was that one, too.
Yes. Unfortunately, I had to miss the library one right before this, so.
Yeah. And that's all I had was the meeting and view of Washburn Court.
Dean.
I had. I had the chairman's board meeting that was after, the day after our last one and the Washburn Court.
Anything going on at the chamber that we should know about?
Mostly they're just talking about the annual meeting in January, the 20th of January.
That's at Chaydees this year, right?
Yep.
Paul?
Pretty light two weeks. Just one meeting that was last Thursday with Tarek and Jesper. And it went okay, just to get caught up to speed.
Department head reports. Ron.
All right, thank you. First of all, Jason attended the Minnesota Rural Water Training in St. Cloud. Their topics were water distribution, fire hydrants. Department Health was there, gave a update, metering, and water colors. Also like to remind residents, the winter parking ban is into, in effect right now. In the parks, we are pretty much working on the shelter design for Amby Park. Under the wellhead grant that we are going to be receiving here, remind the residents that we do have funds for sealing any unused or abandoned wells. So if word could get out there. And the warm and no snow is definitely having positive impact on our budget for this winter so far. Keep that going. And this weekend, somebody asked me, how much water do we use in a typical day? So just for informational purposes, during our winter season, generally we'll run through about $600,000 a day, of which $400,000 is used by industry. And in the summer usage, it's generally about $800,000. We did just have a public works meeting prior to this. One of the items is on our agenda tonight, and a different item we're working on is a ride along a trail on Highway 55 crossing the River Bridge. Mid-Now's going to be replacing the bridge. Along with that is the lighting. They came to us and asked if we wanted the lights replaced. Initially, we had said, no, we would not, because we have to pay 75% of the cost. The cost would be roughly $37,000 would be the city's portion. This is in 2026. They came back to us now and pretty much told us, we do not have a choice, that the lights will be replaced or removed. So Public Works, we're still looking at that. So I don't know what type of lights we want to put in there. If council members want to go through there and take a look if we want to remove them, that is an option, but I don't think that would be a good option.
I don't either.
So it is coming down the line in 2026. So it's just something else we will have to beat budget for.
Does anybody have any questions for Ron? Belinda is the stand-in city admin.
No, she's not.
Right, anybody here for our open forum? Andy? Okay. All right, moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. The minutes listed there on page one, vouchers on page two, which total $208,445.36, along with the annual conference of the city attorney and the resignation of a firefighter on page six. Anybody motion to approve or to adopt the consent agenda and approve that, or does anybody want something called?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Hertzburg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Soini. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right, old business, eight nuisance property and 899 Flanders, page seven of our agenda. And Bill, it says that you're going to be telling us about this.
Okay, so Tarek basically provided me a memo, but the gist of it is, the two vehicles that were out there, they went out and through some discussions, the property owner didn't want them to tow the vehicles to city. They agreed they'd pay the tow fee and they found a place to tow the vehicles to, and so they were removed. But also, while they were there, Tarek and the chief were able to confirm that there are two additional vehicles there, one of which I think was always there. Maybe they were both always there. I don't know. But there's a 2002 Ford Explorer Sport Track that's white, licensed JSX 934, and a 1998 Chevy S10 pickup, black and colored, licensed GDK 224. Neither of which would start when they tried to move them to tow the other vehicles away. So and I think what the chief told me was they're kind of both filled with stuff and haven't been moved in a long time. So Tarek, I think, would like to follow up. And you'll notice in your packet, there's a photograph also of a stack of tires in the back that are just old bald tires, apparently. I can't tell exactly how many there are, but looks like there's more than a dozen. And so Tarek would like to follow up with another notice to the property owner that if those things aren't cleared up, we're going to schedule another public hearing. I don't, if the council's inclined to do that, I don't think there's any reason to give a very lengthy notice. The property owner knows the drill. And I think if we want to do it, we should just proceed. If the councils would like to not do it at this time of year and put it on hold, I, it's up to the council to decide. But we've got the same problem, and there's an additional problem that they weren't aware of before with the tires.
Bill, when we discussed this before, I think we came to the conclusion that the ordinance doesn't allow for the assessment of these nuisance curing costs to be put on property taxes.
No, it actually does.
It does.
Allow for that, yeah. I just, I hadn't looked at it at the time. But it does, it does provide that you can put it on. I, it's, it's very vague in terms of what can be assessed, but you can, you, you have to schedule a public hearing on, on the assessment. You know, so we'd have to have city staff put together costs. Obviously, we had two police officers go out there. We had public notices, I assume. I don't know what other costs, but we had, you know, certainly other costs. I, I didn't keep track of them. But, but there are costs and we could assess them.
A lot of it would be our legal costs, correct?
Yep.
And that would be able to assess also?
I, I mean, it's all costs that the city has to pay in connection with it. I would think you could.
Is that something that we should clarify in the ordinance before moving further on any of others?
No, it's pretty straightforward in there that the cost can be assessed, you know, and, and, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, no, I think, I think it's fine. I know that we traditionally do those assessments. Maybe we do some of them more than, but most of them, we just do once a year, right, Belinda?
We do.
October, November timeframe?
Yeah.
You know, so at this point, if we wanted to wait, I don't know. That's, I guess that would be up to the council to decide. But that's kind of what we've traditionally done is once, once a year, we assess costs.
And it's too late to send it to the county.
Yeah, it'd be for next year anyway, at this point, so.
So we could still do the costs incurred in 2023 as part of a 2025 assessment?
Yeah. We'd do them in the fall of 2024, but they'd go on 2025, yeah.
Well, with that in mind, I think we should pursue the cleanup and the pickup of the next two vehicles scheduled. Public hearing for Wednesday, December 27, 2023 at 6:30, and I'll make that my motion.
I would just say, we've, I mean, that might be a little quick, because we've got to give them some time. I mean, I think if, what if, if we sent out a letter in the next day or two and gave them 10 days, we could do it at the first meeting in January. But I think it'd be a little tight to do the public hearing in two weeks. We, I just feel like there's got to be a little bit of notice. But, I mean, I suppose we could make it seven days' notice to do it and hold the hearing. We could do it, I guess, if that's, if you want to do it that quick, it's, it's probably. I mean, it's not that big of a deal. It's two vehicles and a bunch of, bunch of old tires.
And there's no snow yet.
And they already know about it, so.
Well, Neil, you've got a motion. I'm assuming your motion is that we have on our action sheet to investigate the property and set the hearing.
Begin the process and have the public hear.
Did you want to keep your motion for the 27th, or do you want to amend that?
Is that workable, or?
My understanding is the 27th is perhaps technically workable, but it's typed.
It's typed. Let's go into the first part of January.
So our first meeting in January?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion by Hertzburg, as stated on the action sheet, directing Al Raffai and Wagner to investigate the property regarding the two additional unlicensed and inoperable vehicles and setting a nuisance public hearing for our first council meeting in January 2024 at 6:30. Is there a second to that?
Can I add something to that first?
Let's do a second and then let's discuss.
Sure.
Yeah, well, are you thinking of adding to the motion?
No.
Okay. Let's do, before we do discussion, it's a second, and then I'll turn to you. Do you second?
Second.
Second by Thielen. What's that, Paul?
If those tires are frozen to the ground, there's a good chance that they can't be moved, unless, of course, it's heated or whatever. So that's something that we may want to keep, be aware of, because if we give them time to move it, and you can't move it, then, then, then what do we do? I'd rather be ahead of this than behind it.
Yep.
Bunch of them look like they're on a deck or something, though, maybe.
Looks like a trailer to me.
There's a trailer sitting in front of them.
I can't tell if it's in front of them or.
I don't know what they're stuck, they're sitting on.
All right. Well, we have a motion as stated on the action sheet with the change that the public hearing will be at our first meeting in January rather than on December 27. Executed by Thielen. Paul made the comment that we should keep in mind whether, as we look at abating any of this stuff. I think that's a fair point. Any other discussion on setting the hearing, which is the motion before us? Okay, calling the question, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Who cares? All right, Andy, Jean reminded me that I should really bump you up so that you're not just sitting, you're sitting here.
Doesn't matter. My next meeting is not till eight.
Okay.
As long as I'm done by then.
Well, what do you want?
We better all be done by then.
I plan on being done. I got kids making Christmas cookies. I'd like to get them.
I'm old.
And thought faster.
Okay, irrigation system, Ron, page 11, and let's take a motion on this.
Hearing two at 6:5.
On November 16th, we opened bids for the wastewater system irrigation system improvements. We received one bid in the amount of $448,850, which is below the estimate of $475,000. The low bid was submitted by Hydro Engineering. They've done other projects for the city in the past on the irrigation system, so they are qualified to complete this project. So if the council wishes to proceed, we'd recommend the contract be awarded to Hydro Engineering in the amount of $448,850.
Is it, you said 448?
444, essentially.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it says 444.
The funds for this, obviously, will go to the sewer equipment replacement fund, and I think we've talked about this project.
Sorry about that, guys.
The public works are very good just reviewing this part of this and have recommended it.
I'll make the motion to approve the bid from Hydro Engineering in the amount of $444,850 with funds to come from the sewer equipment replacement fund.
There's a motion by Soini, as stated on the action sheet. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzburg. Any further discussion?
I have one question.
Look, I may only go one bid. Is that all that responded? It's, it's fairly specialized equipment, so, you know, obviously, we spec out equipment that's, matches the equipment that the city.
Okay. Curiosity. Okay.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Right, onto the fee schedule, which is on page, it's also on the update. It's on page 15. So it's a little bit of history, just because it gave Jen a little bit of a heart attack Monday morning when she came in. I looked at our agenda after everything was emailed out. I thought of a couple changes to make to the fee schedule and then quickly realized that I was going down a rabbit hole, so I just asked her to send me a Microsoft Word document, and I went through the whole thing. It's not because something was missed before it was sent out. This was just me going a little bit neurotic, I guess is the easiest way to say it. So the fee schedule is something that we review every year, and then in our next meeting, we will bring in a formal resolution to adopt it. I made a number of changes in here that I can just sort of go through. If you look at the update, there are things where it's crossed out. Looking at like shows and assemblies, there's a note that says SR1, and I don't know why that didn't show on the printout, because it's probably because Microsoft Word is a pain in the neck, so I'll try and pull it up on the big screen here. Oh, although Belinda's got it as well. But like, the first one is a comment on the, the show and assembly cost that says, when was the last time we actually charged this? Out! Don't we always waive it? And I think that if it's something that we always waive, we should just do away with the fee. If we want to keep a permit on there because we need to run background checks or something like that, maybe we do that. But if we're just going to waive the fee every time, then I think we should just eliminate the fee.
Makes sense.
I don't know if anyone else feels otherwise?
See, I don't remember them ever charging.
The next one I have marked is the peddler and solicitor one, which was kind of a note to myself. But Bill, is there a fee for violating that? And maybe it's just.
Charge?
Yeah, a charge for, you know, an ordinance violation if they don't get the permit?
Well, generally, if you violate any of our ordinances, it's a misdemeanor punishable by, you know, 90 days in jail and a $1,000 fine is maximums. I, I don't ever remember charging anybody, having anybody be charged for it, but it would be, I mean, under, under our code, if you violate an ordinance, it's a misdemeanor violation.
Is that something where we could or should adopt? I'm looking at like the burning leaves as a $50 fee and just a flat sanction for that?
I mean, I'll be honest with you. I, I got things put on the fine schedule at the county that are, to have them be payable fines, so we didn't have to deal with hearings if people were willing to pay the fines. But I only did it with things that I can ever remember having been charged. I didn't do it with every possible thing under our ordinance. I'm quite certain I didn't do it with peddlers, solicitors, because I, I've never seen it charged. But with things that we typically see, I, I've done that. You probably, you maybe are familiar with that, but you have to submit a, submit a fine schedule fine, and then it gets approved by the judges, and then it goes on the fine schedule fine, and then it's a payable offense.
It only came to my mind, because I think I had two different people come to my house this year who didn't have the appropriate permits.
Oh.
And I think on both of them, Chief Wagner said, you would have gotten away with it if you hadn't gone to that house. But.
Okay.
I don't know if it was ever charged. I mean, I'm guessing nothing was ever done with it if it never came across your desk, but.
I haven't seen it, but.
Most of the time that the residents will say, do you have a license? Or, you know, I'm not interested. You might want to go see City Hall. Those people come down and they're like, well, we were told we need a license. So our residents tend to police that fairly well.
I was going to say, that's, that's kind of the purpose, is so you have an excuse when they come to your door and say, you need to get a permit before I'll talk to you.
And then when they're issued the permit, we tell them, you're going to have to show this, because people will ask you for it.
I think we should leave it.
Okay, let's leave it. Next thing I have is on the liquor license. I changed it just so that we could discuss. I know Belinda's got a comment down here. She's going to tell us how much of a financial impact that will have. But we're currently charging $3,200 for liquor license, and I thought, why don't we just have that match the marijuana $500? And I know we didn't charge more for marijuana because that's state capped, but can we justify the different cost on that? I don't know. Again, I highlighted it mostly so we can discuss it.
That's, that's quite a decrease.
It is quite a decrease, I know.
I know during the pandemic, we gave them a break on things, too. I remember when we went to Sunday Liquor, that's when they were open on Sundays, we raised it $100 dissolve when we did that.
And that is still, isn't that still, yeah, it's a $200 fee for that?
I would say that one's a $200.
Or maybe.
I think it went up last year, the year. No, I'm not opposed to keeping it. I just wanted to have the discussion. If we're only charging 500 for marijuana, shouldn't we really be charging 32 for alcohol?
Well, with the marijuana, we can do more than one place, can't we? At the 500?
We can do as many on sale liquor licenses. We're not doing that, too.
No, that's based on population. That is limited.
It is capped at two?
It is not capped at two. We've had up to three.
Yeah, right.
Oh, for the on sale?
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to, and it would help the businesses we do have by lowering it to $1,000, but I don't want to see us go down to $500. We can't, it'd be awful hard to get it back.
I was going to say, make it 3,000 and include Sunday Liquor. That's what it is, whether you're open Sunday or not, forget the Sunday Liquor part. You want to be open, you can.
That's.
Does the Legion have Sunday Liquor?
I think they both do.
The Legion does. They just, they don't have it very often.
It's special parties.
Yep, and, and people can get drinks when they have their breakfast on Sunday.
Once in a while, if Sunday's there.
Yeah, Sunday's usually closed.
Yeah, I think, I think we went to 3,000 and include Sunday Liquor would be my recommendation.
Well, Sunday Liquor is a separate license. I mean, you know, but you, you could, I suppose you could say.
28.
28. Make it two for, you know, I mean, it is a separate license. You, I mean, you're going through some paperwork to do that, I, I think.
Yeah, I think you want to keep them separate because there, there are venues that are not going to want Sunday Liquor, they're not going to want people.
Right. Are we limited to 500 for marijuana, or is that just justifiable?
No, that's worth, I believe that's the state cap.
Right now it is, yeah. And I don't know. You know, and the thing is, I don't, I mean, I mean, maybe you'll get a dispensary. It's, it's hard to say, I don't know what's going to happen with that.
We're working on it.
Yeah. But I mean, you might not, you might not be overwhelmed by the demand for them.
And I don't think the 500 is just for dispensaries. Is it, or is that for anyone selling any product in town?
Anybody with, no, I think it was anybody that was selling in town. Dispenser could be different.
Well, maybe I'm using the wrong term. That would, that would be like for medical marijuana, right? A dispenser, I'm barely using the wrong terminology.
We don't know.
Well, I mean, in any event, I just wanted us to be thinking about it. I, I can live with 28, too. I don't have any objection to that. I do think the lowering it, though, is appropriate, given the difficulties of COVID and everything like that, so.
And I believe these have already been paid for for 2024.
They have. Because they had to be in in November. So do we send a refund, or do we just make it effective in 2025? Something to question.
Or we leave it alone?
Well, it's paid for this year, maybe.
Just make it effective in 2023?
Something to renew for 25.
You know, you look at all of these, when you really look at inflation across the board, everything should be going up 10%.
Yeah.
If it's three years since we last, last went up. I mean, as a city, all of our costs, labor, everything has gone up with inflation, so.
Yep.
I'm not against making, and I understand the bars are struggling. If we can help with 500 bucks here or there, that's fine, but.
Well, just so that we have some clarification for staff as they're drafting stuff, do we want to leave that alone and revisit it for 25, or do we want to make a change and possibly refund?
I guess I'd prefer to revisit, means that they've already been paid and.
Okay, so we leave it alone for.
Really hear many complaints, but I'm sure they'd appreciate if we look at it in the future.
All right, Jean's reminding me, we have a 6:30 hearing that gives us a little bit of time. I'll just fly through some of these. The moving permit, I increased that to $75 on the police escort. The comment on there is that it matches the police contract cost otherwise. On the residential, replacing windows, something to think about that I, I thought maybe we could include, is if somebody's upgrading from like a single pane to a triple pane energy efficient window, or an old water heater to an ultra-high efficiency something, should we look at rewarding that somehow with a discounted price? should we look at rewarding that somehow with a discounted permit? So you still have to get the permit, but I don't know, maybe you get a get it for half price or something like that because you're doing the energy efficient thing.
They get those through their electrical companies already?
Not always.
Not always, but I would hate to be the person that has to determine what type of window they're going to get. Because we don't review plans for windows, we would be asking for a ton of specs to see if they're going to meet the guideline for high efficiency.
On the water rates, I just updated that to match what we're considering later tonight, assuming that that will be passed. The transfer of water and sewer, I said, should we get rid of this? I've talked to Jen and Belinda, and both of them are saying we should keep that on there. Talked to me about how we send staff out there to look at everything when we transfer water in October. Costs the city a lot more than 20 bucks. Public Works, the cost on there, I just increased by 3%. Jen talked about a typo or I made an addition, special city council meeting request. She said that that city council should stay out. I agree with her because there's other special meetings that we might do. I crossed out some things that I didn't think were necessarily fees that we charge. But I know Jen and Belinda think that it's helpful to keep them all in one document. We do have to charge sales tax, that was the comment I made on the gazebo reservation, which I think is stupid, but it's the state law, so we live with it. And that's all I had. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but. Then we can go into a public meeting while we think about those things. With that, we have a 6:30 truth and taxation hearing. And I will turn things over to Belinda to go through our budget numbers with us.
Pretty good as best. So every year we are required to turn in a levy on or before five working days after December 20th, which is December 28th of this year. We always come in on the first council meeting just to give us time to do all the spreadsheets and everything that goes along with it. This year, if you look at this screen, it's going to look really different. In the past, Haynesville has done their entire levy into the general fund. And that levy includes any general fund payments to our street projects. Most cities, the most common way to do it actually is to break that out and to put your levies directly into the project fund.
Can I interrupt you for just a hot second? The numbers that Belinda's looking at on here are also included on page 105 of our agenda. So if the screen's hard to read, you can look at page 105 of our agenda and see it in bigger font.
Nope, that's fine. So after talking to the county, after talking to our auditor, I kind of wanted to implement this, but the reason I haven't done it over the past few years is I knew it would look really funny the first year. They encouraged that I should do it. They think it's a better way of accounting. It's a little more transparent, in my opinion. So that's, we just kind of went in with both feet and did that this year. So if you look at that tax levy, the general fund levy is going to be 913,524. The tax abatement, which also goes into the general fund, is 10,162. The debt service levies, which would be broken out into the separate three funds that they go to. The 2016 bond payment is 114,130. The 2017 bond payment is 45,10, $45,010. The 2019 bond is 140,181. Total debt service is 299,321. That's those three street projects added up. And then the grand total of the levy is 1,223,007. That is a $93,953 increase from last year. However, that doesn't affect the general fund in that manner because we're breaking it up. So just to be clear on that. If we go to the next sheet, this is the expenditures in the general fund. The biggest changes you will see is elections went up 100% because we have an election in 2024. We didn't budget in 23 for anything. Administration went up 29%. That includes adding a new 32-hour position in admin and the lodging and tax increase, which also you have the revenue to match that. Maintenance building went up 44%. That is mainly due to a transfer to capital improvement increase. Fire protection, you will see a negative, which looks a little odd. For that is they are no longer going to get the state aid, nor are they going to have to pay the state aid because they're going through para for their relief monies. Tree compost, 24%, mainly salaries in engineering. Streets and alleys, 10.7%, mainly insurance, and that was due to a workers' comp allocation. The public works guys in the past have been allocated to water and sewer. And we found out they cannot be because they don't do 100% water sewers. They actually have to be in general maintenance, which hits the streets and alleys harder. The airport is 12.1% increase salaries and fuel. And of course, you have the revenue of the fuel to match that. The transfers into the debt service, that took a huge reduction of 96%. That is from moving those bond levies out of the general fund. I will no longer be budgeting for the expense of doing the transfer. The next slide just shows salary and benefit percentage comparison. Salaries are 1.3 million, 47% of the budget. Benefits are 131,000, 4.8%. And the remaining budget is 1.3, which is 47.8. This is just a different table showing the difference in the salaries, benefits, and remaining budget from last year to this year. The next pie chart is the breakdown between the different categories within the general fund expenditures. Public safety is 35%, a little over 35%. General government is 21.7. Miscellaneous is 4.5. Debt service is .4. Parks and Rec is 8.7. Public Works is 24.8. And building inspector, compost tree site is 4.6%. The revenue comparison. The biggest change is here, general property taxes reduced by 19%. Again, that's the reallocation. Rent comes in at 437% increase. That is based on a gas fee requirement for leases that went into effect last year. Election, 100%. Again, we have a 2024 election. Motor vehicle went up 16.7% in revenues. That's based on increased filing fees that they're going to be getting. They've already started some of those in October of this year. They're getting more in tapping, those are getting more for title transfers, they're getting more for driver's license, and they just found out they're getting more for DNR fees. So that's great.
About time.
It is about time. The pie chart shows again the breakdown. We've got charges for services at 27.3%. Interest at .8%. Miscellaneous 3.2. State general purpose aid is 31.3. Licenses and permits is 1.8. Property taxes 33.6. State categorical aid is 1.6 and fines and forfeits are .4. This just shows our LGA money over the years. We're 2024 at $858,995. So that's an increase of about $80,000.
We will be getting all of that because our audit is timed timely, right?
Our audit will be done on time. EDAP expenditures. I don't think there's anything real major here. Contract services comes in minus 100 is because we took out the $300. Engineering, we bumped up a bit just based on past year's use. And I'll let Ron take over water and sewer.
All right, thank you. First of all, the water department, the source of supply, that is the wells. We're still running on the same wells we have for the last quite a number of years. And we just did rehab well number seven this year. Generally, that is every five to seven years that they do recommend rehabs. Next item, there's the purification, the filter plant itself. Increase there of 12% and that is mainly due to plant chemicals. We've seen inflation hit that area very hard this year. Distribution system, obviously, we do have about 18 miles of main, so the cost there is just mainly supplies. Under admin, the salaries and workman's comp salaries, I think everyone knows you're planning to have a person part-time or starting prior to my retirement. So that is the reason for the 23% there. Not operating expenses, we did go up $5,000 in the capital replacement project and the reserves there. And so for a total appropriation increase of 6.5%. And where we plan to cover that, our proposal to increase the base rate by $1 and the bulk by 10 cents per thousand. And for a total increase, it would be just over 3%. We got them together. On the pie chart of that, under the source of supply, that is 3.3%. The purification is 5.2%. Distribution system is 3.8%. The salaries and benefits there is 12.4. The other admin area is 6.3. And the lion's share is the debt service and the capital improvement or the non-operating expenses. Under the expenditures budget for the sewer, the collection system, utilities went up by 6.1%. The disposal system, that's the main lift station and the ponds, that went, actually went down a little bit by 4%. Admin again went up by 19% for the salaries. Workman's comp and depreciation went up there. Under the non-operating, we did go up by 3.2% for the CIP and reserves. Irrigation system, the salaries and utilities went up there by 10.6%. The irrigation pond went up by a .7. And for a total appropriation increase of 9.1%. And the sale, correction, the sewer rates, but the residents are going to see or somebody using that is only 10 cents per thousand, and that is only 2.5%. The one that's not on here with our local industry, part of our SIU, is that we will be adding $2,500 a month to their charge for replacing the equipment at the irrigation pond. That is part of our SIU that we've got the ability to do that. And on the pie chart, the collection system and the lift is 2.8%. Disposal is 3.2. Salaries and benefits at 8.9. The admin is at 28.6. The non-operating is at 34.7. The irrigation system is at 5.4. The irrigation admin is at 5.6. The irrigation pond at 10.8%. So, any questions?
Bill? On our pie chart, you'll see that our biggest expenditure as always is buying products that we have something to sell. Next salaries is at 14.5. Other expenses is 11.7. Overhead is 2.2. Supplies, .2. And then we're looking at 1.9% expense would be the transfer that we give to the city every year. The next screen is going to show our trends that we're following in the liquor industry right now. Where liquor is increasing because of the canned cocktails. Beer sales, we're going to maintain right where we are, that they've taken a hit too because of the canned cocktails. Wine sales, as you can see, are down 18.5% even as popular as our wine love is. People are drinking the easy to drink canned cocktails. Other merchandise is 25.1. Tobacco is down. But we gained on the THC CBD sales. That's a new category for us this year. We're projecting 28,000 for next year, and that is based on projections we've had this year so far. Sales tax is 8.8. Other revenues are up 65.4%. We're total of 8.8% revenue increase over next year. And that breaks out on our pie charts as well. Our beer sales are still, majority of our sales are 43%. Liquor 28.9. Wine is 7.8. Merch 5.1. Tobacco 4.9. THC is 1.4. Other revenues at .8. And the sales tax we bring is 8.1%. Anybody have any questions about any of the budgets? We'll say on behalf of the Budget and Finance Committee, a couple of things. One is that what Ron mentioned, which is the increase in personnel costs. And that is that we know that we will not be blessed for Ron to be with us forever. I've asked him about a 30-year contract and he's made it clear that he's not interested in that. So Budget and Finance talked a lot about how we plan for that. And the recommendation there is that we should be putting some money in a budget so that if Ron gives us notice, he's intent to retire, that we can get some hired in to work for a few months. Our hope is that we don't use those monies, that they are simply there. I want to make it clear, Ron, we're not intending to spend that money. We want you to stay. But we would rather the money be budgeted for and not needed. I think, given the importance of having a public works director on, than need it and not have it budgeted. So that's why we're recommending that it stay in there. The admin person at 32 hours a week, that was cut down. The initial recommendation was for full time, which would of course carry benefits and everything else with it. Those are the recommendations from Budget and Finance. And I'm not seeing any other questions. So, yeah, we will close the public hearing and we'll go back. And since we're just about there, I'll say, let's just maybe pick right up back at fee schedule. Any thoughts on any of this, or should we just bring back a proposed resolution, kind of like what we've discussed and what's shown on the changes here?
I'd like to hold off on the the moving fee increase. I just have some questions about that based on some conversations I've had with some moving companies near town. And I'm not quite, I'm quite wrapping my head around the specifics yet. So I just would like to hold off on that one personally.
Well, my thought on that is that if we're charging $75 for our officers to go do other events, why aren't they not being charged the same rate for escort services?
Yeah, I understand the logic behind it. I just, just personally, until I get a better handle on what's going on there, I don't want to increase that one just yet.
I don't understand why.
It's just, we, officers go when they're moving a house or something, and that's we're going to charge the moving company.
Yeah.
It kind of makes sense to charge the same rate.
Yeah, that makes sense.
They're hourly employees, just like public works. Why was it that garbage is no longer on here? Because that's a separate contract?
That's a separate.
So, and that was when I said, I took some things off that Jen and Belinda liked to have on there. I just deleted the garbage and the mayor and council salaries because I said, those aren't fees that the city charges, so they should not be on our fee schedule. And then in talking to Jen and Belinda today about it, they're like, well, we have a lot of residents who come in and might ask us these questions. It's nice to have just on one document all of these things. So I think my comment was, I kind of get it, but I hate it. I still don't think the council salary should be on there. That's an ordinance that can be there, it's not a fee. I think there is some sense in the garbage rates being on there so that members of the public can be directed to it easily. We have an ordinance that sets council fees. I don't know why it needs to be in here, but somebody can tell me why I'm wrong.
I don't see the sense in it either. It's, it's the same for a number of years, so we don't change it very often.
Well, when is the last time, 16?
It's been a while.
Well, it was marked in here, it was. It was...
I thought we were going to do it for next year, but apparently not.
Just doesn't say. Jen, am I reading this right, that it was oh-six?
Oh, it's...
Oh, yeah, per diem was sixteen.
And the per diem, we set by resolution every January. That was something we changed earlier this year.
Um, looks like nine twenty-seven oh-six.
And I remember that was a staggered increase, which I think is why it was put in here as those multiple amounts.
Yeah, because at one time, that was, that was what the, way they wanted to do it, was that when the staff got increased, the council up to same percent every year. But that was only for like a three-year contract, those were three years.
I think it's something we should revisit.
I thought we were going to this year, since it's been so long.
If not this year, for sure next, because next year's a...
We can't. We have to do it before reflection year.
No, but I mean, to go in effect, January of twenty-six.
Yeah, it would have to be, because otherwise, we have to do it right now. Otherwise, we can't do it.
Either, either or. Since oh-six, if we looked at what staff has gotten, the number would be huge.
Well, and with the number of committees that we have for city level, and I know this goes for both staff and council, we do a lot of meetings that aren't, we don't claim a per diem or anything like that for.
Well, there's some committees we're on, like Neil from the senior center and me for the chamber, that's really not even a city committee. It's just the liaison to go, which makes a long week, some weeks.
And sometimes you get asked an awful lot of questions.
Yeah. I don't know. I, I thought we had discussed, we were going to put it in the budget this year for next year, increase.
Well, on the fee schedule, which does not include council salary increase, that's a separate topic. I think whether or not these other things remain included is a separate discussion. Are any changes to the fees that the council doesn't approve of?
Okay.
Okay.
There's one that I thought of that I don't see in here, and maybe that would be brought up in a different discussion. And that's an asbestos removal. Since that is hazardous, that may take some, takes some oversight to get that removed.
So that's handled all through MPCA. So anytime a building is demoed and they pull a demolition permit, we hand them the documents that is between the demolition company or the owner of the property, and that gets filed with MPCA. He doesn't have anything to do with that. They're required to take it to a certified landfill, make sure it's tarped, make sure it's taken care of in those types of manners.
Good. So I'm pretty sure there was a house on Washburn earlier this year that was all plasticked off with dumpsters up front. And I, I don't remember which house it was, but I assumed that it was either lead or asbestos that they were probably mitigating.
It's very possible.
That was included with MPCA, so we didn't have to do anything extra as a city.
Correct. So they'll still have to pull a demolition permit or remodeling or whatever it is. But if they determine that there's either lead or asbestos, they have to dispose of it in the, in the ways that MPCA is approving.
So it doesn't cost the city any extra time?
Nothing, no.
Okay, so then...
Unless we're involved in a building that we want to remove that has lead or asbestos, then we have to do the environmental, you know, assessment, bring, and then typically, if there's another building that they've done an environmental assessment, we'll actually ask for a copy of that and put it right in their file. That's the bigger cost, is not only the demolition, but the environmental assessment.
Paul, does that answer your question?
Sure does.
Okay, so then I'm hearing kind of a consensus that we essentially adopt this and figure out from here.
Sir Mayor, I have one.
Yes, Ron.
Okay, thank you. On page seven of your update, the trunk fees for sanitary area. The recommendation and what's on the resolution, the changes from sanitary sewer with the numbers to varies by development. What trunk area fees are, it's a tool for the council to use when a development is made. It's for unassessable footage. If a development doesn't have any, I guess the thinking is, or the thought there is, why should we be charging them? Or if it's more, then they should be charged more. But it is just a tool that the council has at their disposal to utilize. So far, I think we've had trunk fees for ten or twelve years now, and they have never been implemented once. So, but I don't think we want to do away with it. When we look at other communities surrounding us, there's only one other community that even has trunk fees, and that one also then is, it varies by development.
And that is what your recommendation is for water and sewer?
Correct.
So, yeah, that was...
So we make sure we both manage.
Okay. That makes sense. The only other comment I had, I'm looking through my notes here, it's on page eleven of the update for the special request for police officers at seventy-five dollars an hour. The question I had was if we charge a minimum. So if we're sending officers out, are we saying, you have a two-hour minimum? If so, I just think that should be marked on here. And the chief's not here tonight, so maybe before we come back, he can be asked.
There definitely should be a minimum. I know we have, he has one, is, with his agreements with other communities for events, I'm pretty sure, but...
Yeah, my only thought is just if there's a minimum charged, then that should be on the fee schedule.
I thought the sidewalk for downtown, the business district, I thought we just raised that. It hasn't been that many years.
No, we did, just, just two years ago.
Because here it says nineteen.
That's probably nineteen that it was scheduled.
But it didn't go into effect till twenty... I only had to pay it once while I owned the building.
Looks here like...
We went from a dollar to a dollar fifty or something.
Yeah, because I didn't think it was nineteen, that many, I thought we just talked about a year.
I didn't do that, because I only had to pay it when I sold the building, twenty, twenty-two, oh, twenty-one.
You still had the building when we talked about it.
Yeah, as I had to pay the interest.
I know you said it affected you, but you were in favor.
Yep.
Based on the resolution number that was done early in the year, it's oh-nine would be done early in the year.
So it didn't even, yeah.
So it would have not affected, it would have affected the snow season of oh-nine.
Yeah.
Or, excuse me, nineteen, because it's oh-nine, the resolution number, so, yeah, so it would have been affect for nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
And I think it's important to note that with twenty-twenty being COVID, time doesn't seem like it passed the same since then or during.
No, I'm good with what we got here for this year.
Jen, does that give you enough direction on what to bring back, more or less?
Yeah, the biggest thing is I'm going to keep garbage in, but remove the salaries for council and mayor, and then just fix up a few that you had highlighted.
Okay.
Check with the chief on the...
And I'm going to check on the chief on the minimum. Yep.
Okay.
And if I have any questions, I'll just shoot you on any of them.
Does the Finance Committee typically look at these and make recommendations?
We have in the past.
Because I think anything that's over five years old, we should kind of look at and keep up with inflation.
That's a fine tooth comb, and we changed it a lot last year.
We do.
We did.
Well, it looks like nineteen, a lot got changed too. I think every five years is reasonable.
Great. So, then moving on, since we don't need to take action on that, we'll bring it back. Our resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seven, code thirty-four, these are the water rates. Water and sewer, as Ron discussed, increasing nominally in order to reflect some of the increased costs. What I'm trying to jog my memory on here is if we still have our, if we don't. Ron, can you speak just a little bit as far as how our rates compare to some of our neighboring communities, and how we're on like the bottom three?
Yes, our rates are extremely competitive of all our neighboring communities. We are definitely on the bottom three. And that would go for the sewer rates also.
Right. So we've heard about this from our truth and taxation hearing. This time I'd entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seven, unless there's any further discussion or comments on it.
I'll move to adopt the resolution.
Motion by Hertzberg, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Soini, any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Closed, none. Motion carries. Right, the twenty-twenty-four budget on page thirty of our packet. We heard about this in the truth and taxation hearing. I wanted to make one proposed modification to the budget, although it does not affect the levy. And that is, with our last meeting, we approved going to Stearns County for prosecution services for a year. I talked to Belinda, that's going to save us approximately, what, like ten thousand five hundred or something like that from what was budgeted. I would recommend, I think, that with all the talk about a new library, we take that ten thousand saved and move it into the library capital improvement fund, which brings it up from ten to twenty. It doesn't change the levy amount or anything like that, it's just a reallocation based on saved funds. That's my two cents there.
Sounds okay to me. We're going to do a library, so...
Wish it was a lot bigger figure, but every, every ten helps.
I agree. It's, but, you know, we're not quite at the point yet where we're looking at building, so this is twenty thousand dollars more per year than we had last year.
Well, I'll make that motion if there's any further discussion.
All right, I have a motion by Hertzberg to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-eight, adopting the twenty-twenty-four city budget with the modification to twenty thousand dollars to the library capital improvement, using the savings from the PD legal. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Soini, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Closed, none. Motion carries. Right, page one hundred two then, the adoption of the levy. And again, this was broken out, as Belinda was describing before, where we have the debt services and the general levy set out differently here. Hold on, are we going to need to update this resolution, or can I sign it yet tonight?
I'm going to have to update it.
Okay.
So we're not going to approve it?
No, we can do, there's, the paperwork needs to be updated. All right, so then we're looking at resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-nine, approving the final twenty-twenty-four tax levy collectible in twenty-twenty-four. Again, it's a general fund levy of nine hundred thirteen thousand five hundred twenty-four Tax abatement levy of ten thousand one hundred sixty-two, and then three debt service levies totaling two hundred ninety-nine thousand three hundred twenty-one, for a grand total of one million two hundred twenty-three thousand seven dollars. Which is a total increase of, it's less than a hundred thousand from last year's levy.
Ninety-four, right under ninety-four.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-nine, adopting the final twenty-twenty-four tax levy collectible in twenty-twenty-four.
There's a motion by Soini, stated on the action sheet, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg, approving resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-nine. Any discussion on that?
Just a comment, the notice we got from Stearns County, not that it'll be much, but we, we went in at a much higher rate than our final. So your figures will be a little less than what the estimate was, which is, for once, I can have some good news.
So what was our initial, what was our prelim?
It was like sixteen percent.
Yeah, we went in close to max.
We took off a hundred and twenty thousand, I think.
That sounds about right.
Because we actually reduced, the police department currently has the police chief and two full-time officers. He actually has, so that's, you know, the total of three full-timers. He has five in the budget because of the goal of... He agreed to eliminate the fifth position, which was almost a hundred thousand dollar savings. And then the part-time admin person that would be split between HR and admin and Public Works clerical work, went from full-time to part-time, which reduced the hours plus the benefits.
Yeah, I thought from our, I wanted to say our initial levy was about a three hundred thousand dollar increase, and that dropped down to less than ninety-four. Now, the Stearns County notice is going to be, the real effect is going to be much lower. Okay. All those in favor of adopting of the resolution indicate by saying aye. Aye. Closed, none. Carries. All right, approving Bill's new contract on page one oh-four of our agenda. Bill, anything you wanted to add to this? It says you're going to give a report.
I don't really have anything to add, and I think it's kind of self-explanatory. I was basically just saying that, you know, to the extent that we have ordinance violations, I'd be willing to handle those at the same hourly rate that I've done in the past for criminal prosecutions, and I was increasing my civil rate by four percent, roughly to a hundred thirty-five dollars an hour. Otherwise, remain the same.
There's any discussion on this, otherwise a motion would be in order?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Soini, stated on the action sheet to approve the agreement, or authorize Bill Spooner to continue as he has been with the increased rates. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brick, any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I have one here.
Yeah.
Also, in Bill's letter, it was a meeting, Minnesota Attorneys Conference, for three hundred fifty dollars. Do we want to include it in there with it?
That was up in the consent.
It was in the consent, we are pretty...
Oh, you're right.
No worries. Right, calling, calling the question then. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Closed, none. Motion carries. All right, on to the airport teahanger lease agreements. I knew I was going to get it.
He's not paying attention.
I guess ten minutes.
Andy, do you want to hire some new firefighters?
I would like to hire two new firefighters, starting in January. Open it up in January.
Do we have grand ideas for how we're going to entice people to fly?
Social media for the most part, and through the websites and everything else that we've done. Most of it is just word of mouth. Everybody knowing somebody or suggesting or whatever, that's how most of our people get brought in. So, they might see it, but they might not think that they're capable until they talk to another firefighter, another city member, or somebody in town that knows a firefighter and how to get through it. Majority is word of mouth, so...
Well, it took us a while last time. I'm hoping it goes smoother this time. Okay, we'll see. All right, so we're looking for a motion to start the hiring process for two volunteer firefighters.
I'll make the motion to start the hiring process for up to two volunteer firefighters and law of the fire and administration departments to continue the process till a recommendation can be made to council.
There's a motion by Hertzberg, is there a second?
A second.
Heard it from Brick. All those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Closed, none. Motion carries.
I have a question for you, Andy.
Sure.
To tell us of the truck?
Uh, no news on the truck yet. We did go down, we took a training, did a training with the truck or whatever, how to operate it and everything. We found the doors, the overhead doors were too heavy to lift manually, so we had to have some type of electric lift system put in that. So that's what we're waiting on currently. It was supposed to be two weeks. Well, two weeks was up, middle of last week, and we have not gotten any feedback from them. Dusty's been in contact and just waiting for a final date when it's going to be ready. So we're hoping this week, should be shortly, but yeah.
Okay. All right, now on to the airport lease agreements, we have a number of them. All right, now on to the airport lease agreements, we have a number of them. We switched these last year to annual renewals, so we're just looking for a motion to approve the airport lease agreements with the individuals listed on the action sheet.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Soini to approve the agreements with the individuals listed on our action sheet, is there a second?
Second.
Heard it from Thielen. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Carries. All right, on to our update, ad hoc library board mileage reimbursement. Last week, Friday, like I said, the library board went to Fargo. I drove myself, Steve Peterson drove, a number of other folks. I'm not going to be claiming mileage because I could have ridden within, but for some personal obligations, it's like I think under our policy that where carpooling is available, it's just not right that I would claim it. It's probably a moot point because I talked to Steve, he doesn't want it anyway, and I still think it would just be a good faith gesture if we authorized him to claim it should he so desire. I asked Jen to put this on here before I had the chance to talk to Steve, but in the event. We don't usually do per diems or mileage reimbursements or anything like that for board members, so we don't have to. But it's a thought that occurred to me while I was driving up, so I called Jen and we put it on here and we take it from here.
It was, everybody rode with him?
Yeah. Yeah, I was the only one who drove separately because I had to take my daughter to the doctor in the morning, so.
Well, I'll make the motion to reimburse for the mileage per our going rate of 62.5 or whatever.
65.
65, all right.
I assume that's should he choose to.
Yeah, his choice.
All right, so there's a motion by Hertzberg to reimburse, should Mr. Peterson choose to submit reimbursement, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. All right, note for informational that we have the elected leaders institution, institute, contact Kristen if you want to go. I will add that I'm going to be taking a close look at committees, plan to be making a number of changes because we've all been on the same committees now for a few years, so it's time to shake things up a little bit. I'm saying goodbye to policies and procedures, prep yourselves now. So let me know where you'd like to serve, what you like. There are a few where I know that we should keep people on, but let me know what you like, what you don't like, where you might want to go, and I'll come with a list. So with that then, we have a recommendation to meet in closed session. We discussed this at our library meeting to regroup on the offer for the 311 Washburn Court property. Anybody wanting to make a motion to go into closed session to discuss that?
Also move.
All right, we have a motion by Hertzberg to go into a closed session, discuss 311 Washburn Avenue and an offer on that pursuant to the open meeting law, section 13D05 sub 3. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brick, thank you. Any further discussion on going into closed session? None. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. All right, so we're going to close session and then where are you thinking you're going to stick around?
I want to stay.
It might be 10 minutes, it might be 20, I really don't know how to gauge it.
It'd be boring.
It's just we have to.
She'll be pushing us live.
Yeah, in the spring, March, I think.
I thought it was May.
Well, it was, it's been, it's been pushed a couple times, so it might be May now, but we'll see.
That's the way the other day was.
I've got a thumbs up for Kristen, so we're back live. We're back from our closed meeting, back into a public session. We've discussed the offer on 311 Washburn Avenue, and at this time I would entertain a motion to purchase or to accept the offer of $250,000 and authorize the city attorney to negotiate closing dates and other terms as discussed in our closed session.
I'll move to accept the offer.
There's a motion by Brick, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. Then we also have the fun closed session on our annual performance appraisal for the city administrator. Tarek's not here, but I've got appraisals, yeah, performance appraisals. And I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss that if we wanted to do a closed session to discuss the city administrator's performance evaluation.
I moved to go into closed session to do the review.
All right, motion by Hertzberg to go into closed session pursuant to section 13D05 subdivision 3A to discuss the city administrator's annual performance review. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen, any discussion?
Do we normally do those when the people aren't here?
The council's done them both ways.
Yep.
Because I didn't hand mine in because I didn't think we're going to do it this week.
You're supposed to hand it in anyway.
All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All right. Kristen will let us know when we're back offline.
I think she will.
I don't want to stick around.
No, it's been a busy week, she's tired.
I thought only a field goal.
I know, but he's told me that like six times today.
I can't believe it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
What do we do?
I'm waiting for Kristen to give me the, oh, there it is. Okay, we are back on. So we are back in open meeting. We met in closed session to discuss performance review for the city administrator. We had some helpful feedback and comments from all the council members, and it is the consensus of the council that we revisit this topic at our next city council meeting when the administrator can be present and we can all do, go over the comments and feedback with him directly. Hearing nobody disagree and seeing head nods all around, that is the end of our business and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Megan, go get.